So we're probably blowing everybody's TVs out at home right now, but um so the it's live on TV now, but we can't you won't be able to hear us here tonight through the PA system, okay? Okay, so we're coming back from executive session. We did just close out the executive session downstairs. Um, we're gonna open with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll open with our first public comment. Is anybody here for public comment this evening? Seeing none, we're gonna move on to the review and approval of minutes from ten twenty-six, twenty-three, which are in our packets.
Yep.
Okay, motion to approve the minutes of October twenty-six, twenty-twenty-three is distributed.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Town managers report.
A couple of quick updates. Um, next Tuesday night is a finance committee meeting and the plan is to go through the same exact presentation that uh we went over with the board two weeks ago about uh trying to look at FY twenty-five and beyond. Um, and so again, that's next Tuesday night. Their meeting's starting at six o'clock, not at seven, but at six o'clock uh next Tuesday here. Um, and then our next meeting is uh would normally be two weeks from tonight, but that's Thanksgiving, so it's the week later, which is uh Thursday, November thirtieth. Um, Heather and I each have a couple of uh quick things to update you on. Um, Mass DOT, Department of Transportation will be doing work on the Route Six Eastbound off-ramp um at the current Exit Fifty-Nine, the old Exit Two. So that part of the ramp will actually be closed uh next Thursday, the sixteenth, from uh nine PM to five AM. So they're doing the work over the night, but just so the public's aware, uh one of the off-ramps on Exit Two will be closed and people will be detoured to Quaker Meeting House Road. Eversource is um holding a pretty broad uh public hearing with the Energy Facility Siting Board relating to the whole Mid-Cape Reliability uh project and some uh West Barnstable substation work and zoning exemption. So if anyone's interested in that, we have the background um at our office if people wanna contact Town Hall. And then I just have a three or four substantive things to update you on on our wastewater efforts. So we've uh had a busy several days, so uh yesterday uh the town of Mashpee hosted uh two separate meetings, the first one focusing on the Pompaness at Bay watershed, so it was ourselves, Mashpee, and uh Barnstable was invited to attend. Um, so we're just continuing our work on that. We uh reviewed a proposal from an engineering firm to help with a notice of intent that needs to be filed on Pompaness at Bay ultimately with the state to show that we're going towards one of those watershed permits. Um, so uh that was talked about. Then an hour later, uh Falmouth arrived, so we then talked about Wacoit Bay, so we're working on that uh with them. Um, as the board is probably aware, we have a formal signed agreement with Barnstable, Mashpee, and us, intermunicipal agreement for the Pompaness at Bay watershed. We don't have one, a similar one for Wacoit yet. So based on our old draft, um they're looking at the draft to try to replicate what we did there, uh working with Falmouth, and I think it's important to realize when you think of Falmouth, um it's sort of a huge difference compared to us, as the board recalls. Like, we contribute to three impaired imbeams to the south, but we don't have any impaired imbeams in our town. Falmouth has fourteen impaired imbeams in their town, and the way their infrastructure's set up with their sewerage, it's basically in the western, southwestern part of the town. Wacoit Bay is the furthest to the east, so they're literally, you know, moving down, and they've they've been very upfront that they're not gonna get to Wacoit Bay for probably um, you know, ten-plus years, but we still wanna get that uh watershed permit in place. We still wanna find out how we can help them. Um, Sandwich contributes roughly six percent, so in the scheme of things, it's very small, but we still have a responsibility, and I think that's a perfect example, as uh Dave Mason and Ed Leonard have shown us through the years for one of those nitrogen credit trading where it might make way more sense for us to contribute some money for them to address the problem at the source instead of us building something way away that really won't impact and hit that watershed for a really long time. So um, you know, we were very upfront with them that that was our plan. And then today, Dave Mason met with the town of Barnstable to talk about three bays, so we're working on um an intermunicipal agreement on that as well. So all that is progressing. Um, DEP contacted us this week. Uh, if the board remembers, there were uh with the new nitrogen-sensitive area regulations which impact Cape Cod, uh we have to go either the route where we're working on watershed permits and agreements, which is what we've all talked about to buy us more time and to fix things more thoroughly. And the other alternative is to do innovative uh septic systems that really haven't proven to be effective yet on a wide-scale basis. They might help smaller areas, but not on a on the size of some of the problems that we're facing, and so we need to submit a notice of intent with DEP to say, we plan to go the watershed route, and I know that's what the board uh identified, and I think he might have even voted previously, so Dave, Heather, and I are working on getting um an electronic application submitted just to show that that's what our intent is. There's gotta be a lot more details per uh submitted, but we already submitted a copy of our existing comprehensive water resources management plans, so the state has that, and um we're just gonna see what we need to do next, but we've let them know that's the route we're going, similar to what we said at several meetings. And then lastly, just got overnight, and I'll get it to Town Council next week, the Charter Review Committee's been working really hard to get their revised language to present to a future town meeting, and so got a full draft of that last night, so I'll get that up to Town Council next week so they can start looking at it. Um, and I know um the local planning committee is still working on trying to finish up the local comprehensive plan, so we can get maybe at our next meeting or two, we could try to look at dates for a potential special town meeting in January or February, and that's it. And then Heather has a couple things.
Just um very briefly, um you have in front of you, if you don't already, I've got an extra one here for all of you. Um, I think you're aware, we are coming upon our first anniversary at one hundred Route Six A. We didn't do any formal ceremonies. We had a community cookout, which was great last year, um but we'll have a formal ribbon-cutting ceremony on Monday, the twentieth, which is our first anniversary um of our um return to uh moving into that building. Very um a brief ceremony beginning at nine AM, a few speakers, um Bud, Shane, the general contractor, and the architect will make some comments on behalf of the project overall, and then we'll have ribbon-cutting and light refreshments and coffee, and we will let the community know about that as well, but I wanna make sure that's on all of your agenda, and we'll do a little bit more um outreach on that as well. And then um two project updates on you all, um I think I've been following the canal judging and beach nourishment in Town Neck Beach, um which is going really well. They may be nearly concluded by this time. Um, we were myself and David DeConte were able to get out on a tour um last week when they were doing the um the you know, getting the sand right up onto the shore. Impressive project. Um, they feel like they've um been able to um get as much sand as they had funds for, so up to, you know, the top range of the scale. We won't know for sure until the um post- beach nourishment survey is completed, but the next steps will be they'll be securing the site with fencing, and then the um the beach grass planting will happen, so that will place will be secured for a while while the beach planting occurs, and um it's, you know, protected from from the public. And then real quickly, um Board Rock Project, we had our onsite meeting on Tuesday morning, and that project continues to go um very well. A little slower over the last few weeks, the tides have not been working in favor of of the construction, but moving um moving along as expected. The next um removal of planks up to the Mill Creek Bridge is expected within the next two-week horizon. They're not exactly sure, again, all tide and weather depending, so you'll see those come back up here, and we'll have more information about that when that happens. Um, one thing we can think about, all of you might wanna think a little bit about is when we've sort of got to the end of the community picking up planks that they've um wanted to pick up from their family, there will be many planks remaining. We talked about um making those available for sale to the community, um and it's really at what point we want to declare some of those salvageable to the community. And then I think that's it. That is it.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions from other Heather? Okay, seeing none. Uh, we'll move on to correspondence, statements, announcements, future items, and follow-up.
Just a couple of quick words, please. On the first, Sandwich Citizens Police Academy alumni participated in a school bus extrication drill at Forestdale School. Meanwhile, the alumni also participated in an emergency warming station drill at the center for active living. Both events received good reviews. Thank you. Uh, the Commission on Disability met on the first, discussions related to school security, school playgrounds, interest in involvement with diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging, the eye-to-eye program, Cape Cod Rapid Transit routes, Sandwich Accessibility Day, municipal website improvements, and interest in a joint session with the school committee. On the same day, school committee, the superintendent reported, the a peer leaders group is being developed in grades eight through twelve. School committee visits to the facilities highlighted some existing maintenance and capital needs. Uh, more to come on that in the budget period. Uh, the committee members expressed mutual interest in joining in in a joint meeting with the Commission on Disabilities' overall progress. On Sunday, the fifth of of November, our newest uh Sandwich Eagle Scout, Sullivan William Gaffney, was uh honored here in uh here in Town Hall. Congratulations, Sullivan. Thank you.
Anybody else have any? All right, we're gonna move on to the joint meeting with the Library Board of uh Library Trustees to an appointment to fill a vacancy through five-nine-twenty-four, the next town election. Yeah, come on down.
Tell them to put, make sure the green, Patrick, anyway.
Sure. Leah. If you could just introduce yourself for the the folks then.
I'm the chairman of the Board of Trustees, and I have two other trustees who will be there tonight, which one, I'm concerned, we're here to ask for approval for our trustee candidates, who are members of the board. Um, the board of trustees has a question for our um to fill a vacancy that we have with three women, but hardly assigned for over this fall, um and we're hoping that she would be on the ballot, actually, because of her previous track. Um, and has a sense of experience in government, she worked in at the county and uh she's definitely in the council aging and um including as their director. She's also served in other boards, including the um board directors of our services, including the cabinet for our uh conference, and so forth. And has expressed an interest in bringing her experience to us and working on products with trustees and trustees who appreciate the ability to add me in balance, so I hope we will.
Could you give us her full name?
Lynn Waterman.
Waterman? Yeah. And Bud, if you could just explain the...
Yeah, sure, when a vacancy occurs on elected board, there's a state process whereby a joint meeting is held between that board and the select board to appoint someone only until the next town uh election, which is uh next May ninth. Um, and so it's a joint vote of both boards who are present in voting, and we've had this come up before. Even one person from the library board, if they came, they could still participate in the vote. It doesn't require a quorum of the board that's joining, so when it is taken, it should be a roll call vote.
Okay, may I presume, though, that the other members of the trustees uh endorse Lynn as well, Ms. Waterman as well?
Yes, that's right. She's been in uh in a couple of the ones, back down.
Okay, motion to appoint Lynn Waterman to fill a vacancy on the Library Board of Trustees through May ninth, twenty-twenty-four. Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, we're gonna do a roll call vote. Patrick?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
Shane?
Aye.
I'm a aye as well. Thank you.
And now we're getting to um library roll call as well. Yep.
Unanimous.
Unanimous.
You're in.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for volunteering. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on to the our first public hearing, actually, our only, it's all combined.
Yeah.
This is a long one for everybody.
And I don't think you need to, I I'm just saying, I think you could just say, you don't think you have to read all the different, yeah, all the poll numbers would take a half hour.
And for those that are at home and those that are in here, there's probably about a hundred poll numbers that are listed, so we're gonna try and simplify this so that uh everybody gets the gist of it. Um, the Sandwich Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Thursday, November ninth, twenty-twenty-three, at seven-twenty PM in the Sandwich Town Hall Auditorium, one-thirty Main Street, Sandwich, Mass, zero-two-five-six-three, upon the petition of Verizon New England Inc. and N-Star Electric Company doing business as Eversource Energy, petition number MA two-zero-two-three-dash-fifteen from Verizon New England proposing to place new facilities on the service road, and petition number Mass two-zero-two-three-dash-one-seven for Verizon New England Inc. and N-Star Electric doing business as Eversource Energy to place to relocate poles on along the service road in Sandwich, and Mass petition number MA two-zero-two-three-dash-eighteen for Verizon New England Inc. and N-Star Electric doing business as Eversource Energy to relocate poles along the service road in Sandwich, and for petition M number MA two-zero-two-three-dash-nineteen for Verizon New England and N-Star Electric doing business as Eversource Energy to relocate pole uh forty-six seventy-eight and place new pole forty-six seventy-eight and a half on Quaker Meeting House Road in Sandwich. Anyone wishing to be heard will be afforded an opportunity at that time.
Motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
I guess before we open it up, every one of these requests is related to the work going on on the service road, and DPW has reviewed and supports all the requests.
Okay, and the public hearing is now open. Would anyone from the, well, let's have our discussion first, then we'll open it to...
Yeah. In reviewing all these, all all they are doing is either moving a pole or replacing a pole all the way along the the length of the service road.
Yeah. If you could just make sure the green light's on, the microphone's down.
I'm Jim Murphy, we're the President of Verizon for MA two-zero-two-three-dash-fifteen. Um, we want to put two pedestals and uh the three-year-old vehicles up there. It's part of the uh...
That's the one that cuts across the entrance to Round Hill? Is that?
It cuts through across Round Hill.
Yeah.
Okay. I don't see any other questions from the board or Charlie?
I'm good. Anybody from the public?
Would anybody in the public like to speak or be heard on this? Seeing none.
Okay, motion to close the public hearing.
A motion.
Second.
A second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing's now closed.
Now we do it again, right?
They're all they're all the same public hearings, so it's only one hearing for the whole four.
Okay, so um, okay, mo- motion to accept the grant of easements for eight Quaker Meeting?
Wait, that's um, that's something else, sorry.
Different one.
Uh-oh.
That's for the um, yeah, sorry.
Okay.
I think if you just reference the petition numbers, we're fine.
That's better. Motion to approve a petition number MA two-zero-two-three-dash-one-five, petition MA two-zero-three-dash-one-seven, petition MA two-zero-three-dash-one-eight, petition MA two-zero-three-dash-one-nine.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, approved. Thank you.
I don't know if the board wants to. The first two items under new business are utility um things for both Verizon and N-Star. They don't require public hearings, but I know there's some representatives here if we just wanna knock those off, if if you're so inclined. One's related to Round Hill Road, and then it's just look relocating the wires on the new poles once they go across as they cross the public right-of-way, and again, on both these, DPW has reviewed and uh support the recommended uh recommended um request.
Okay, so what I'll do is we'll do the uh Verizon one first. Uh, you guys wanna hold on? We got, grab the Verizon guy?
Oh.
Oh, you're you're Darrell's there. All right, do we need N-Star still? All right, so the Verizon New England Inc. utility license for Round Hill Road. Darrell, I didn't see you sitting there.
And just to explain what happened, those petitions were submitted to the town actually in particular the town that was uh, maybe just sent me here somewhere. It was just uh, I brought it up in the chat, uh, anyway, it was uh, and the licenses for the facility we located on uh, one side of the control.
Relocated to the other side, we needed to update the license to approve.
Okay, this is the one here. Now, is it, we're now, we're now gonna talk about the the large cables crossing these three roads, correct? Is that what we're talking?
I think that's the second one after this one.
This is just Round Hill.
The petition hearing you already had on the uh MA two-zero um two-three-dash-one-five was for the conduit along...
Right, we voted that.
Uh, service road that came then came across the street. This is from that point up...
Round Hill.
Round Hill Road on the opposite side of the road because of the parking area that was going in there, relocate the facilities to the other side of the street.
Correct. We just voted that.
No, the Round Hill is the different, that's the um, the box.
This is the first two things under new business, 'cause they didn't require a public hearing.
Yeah.
I just thought while they were here.
Yeah, it's further down in the packet. It's a...
It's the two at the back, sorry.
Yeah.
To be honest, I'm not sure what the N-Star one is.
Yeah.
But I mean, I I know, I mean, the other one was the other license for Round Hill. That's for Str- uh, just for Verizon.
It's right here.
Yeah, that was... The green.
So we think I almost didn't come.
It's right after the um FY twenty-five and beyond information, and it's just a a very uh one page and then a signature portion of a license agreement just to move the stuff 'cause it's on our road. Technically, almost a driveway, but yeah.
It has the yellow.
Yes, yeah.
The yellow stamp on it. This one?
Yeah.
Oh, it's down towards the back of the packet.
And the reason for it being a license is because that's private land owned by the town. It's not a grant to location like we do on a normal petition.
You wanna make it? I'll do it. Okay, you're good?
Yep.
Okay. Motion to accept the grant even easements for eight Quaker Meeting House Road and eighty-six Greenville Drive. One one.
That's wrong.
That one's still wrong, huh?
Yep.
This one here. Where are we?
This one here. Just the...
Okay. Routing underground services on on Hill. Service. Is the project number? Oh, we're good. Yep, okay, thank you. Motion to approve a license to provide a rerouting of underground services along the town's Round Hill Road property off the service road in Sandwich, Mass. in accordance with Mass DOT Project six-zero-eight-four-two-two.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That is approved.
All right, that's that one.
All right, now we're gonna move on to the N-Star Electric uh Company doing business as Eversource location and wires petition. Charlie, I'm just gonna grab this back.
This one's pretty lengthy 'cause and it's got some uh colored plans and stuff as well, so, yeah.
I had these all.
You're here to just explain what a the grand public here.
I think if you wanna just explain overview what the...
Oh, sure. Yeah, so this is part of the Mid-Cape project, and um as part of the transmission line, um the 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 heavier wires are gonna, transmission wires are gonna cross um Quaker Meeting House Road, um Mill Road and uh Great Hill Road, and um of course, Eversource needs grants to location in order to be able to cross the roads. I have, if you guys want copies, hard copies, I got a bunch with one-by-seventeens if you wanna, so. And my name is John Perrin with Cornerstone Energy Services, a consultant that um sim out from time to time.
So my understanding is that these are the high ten- the improvement on the high-tension wires that everybody sees, the great big tall ones, poles, and you're now asking permission to cross three town roads?
Correct.
Which you need in order to complete the project?
Correct.
So the public knows what we're talking about. And those three roads are Quaker Meeting House Road, Mill Road, and Great Hill Road.
Correct.
Any other questions?
I would just say any questions, DPW had, N-Star was great getting responses and um, you know, had a mass engineer look Massachusetts-based engineer look at everything, and everything's good.
And from reading the designs, they'll be at least seventy feet above the ground, the wires, about...
The each road crossing is different. The first one, Quaker Meeting, on the on the petition is fifty, fifty-two above...
Yeah, I think that's the...
At its low point, above the street and so on, so.
Not to put you on the spot, Paul, but any comments? That you're good with this?
Yes, we are.
Okay. Motion to grant N-Star Electric Company doing business as Eversource Energy a petition to relocate wires on Line one forty-four Mid-Cape Reliability Project, crossing Quaker Meeting House Road at a location approximately eighty feet northeasterly of its intersection with Keyes Way, Mill Road at a location approximately two-hundred-and-seventy-five feet northeasterly of its intersection with Deerwood Drive, Great Hill Road at a location approximately three-hundred-and-thirty-one feet northeasterly of its intersection with Maxwell Lane.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Ayes.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. What would you have done if we didn't vote it?
I'd go back and tell them. Thank you. All right, we're move, we're gonna go back to uh the staff meeting, uh Mike Richard, PE Weston and Sampson Working Group, uh the Finance Committee member Matt Anderson, Fire Chief John Burke, Select Board Member Pat Ellis, Assistant Town Manager Heather Harper, Select Board Member Charlie Holden, DPW Director Paul Tilton, the overview of the joint Department of Public Works and Fire Substation Facility efforts. Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So uh again, my name is...
If it's not on, could you make sure the light's on? We can't...
The light is on.
Perfect.
All right.
Sold.
Uh, thank you. Uh, again, my name is Mike Richard. I'm from Weston and Sampson Engineers. Uh, with me tonight also is Christine Cowlick Grillo, our project architect for this the study that we did. Um, we're here to present uh the, an overview of the feasibility study for a new DPW facility and fire substation, also known as Station One. and fire substation, also known as Station 1.
Oh, that is gone. Oh, you got it? Okay.
Okay, hold on.
Oh, don't tell me that's affected too.
Want me to do it?
Didn't move.
Let me try this. Hold on. Shit, oh, it's gone. Try it again. There we go. Okay. So tonight, what we're going to do is we're going to, we just wanted to give you an introduction about the project, and we'll talk about why we're here in terms of what's driving the project, what brought the project forth, forward, and then some of the benefits of moving forward with the project and the work that's been completed to date, as well as talking about the next steps, what we're here for. So back in 2020, the town allocated $25,000 for a new feasibility study. At that time, it was just the public works facility. At that point. Okay. So at that point in time, it was just a public works feasibility study, but there was also a recognition that Fire Station 1 had to be replaced. The town engaged services of Weston and Sampson to help them with that study. And since that time, we've been working with the committee members, the names that you see up here on the screen in the top right. The study was completed in 2022, and the result of that study was support for funding the next steps. They took that, the town took that, or the committee took that to the annual town meeting in May, and $300,000 was allocated for schematic design, its due diligence, and the first step in the design process. So we're here tonight to request support, to issue a request for proposals for an owner, owner's project manager, as well as A&E Design Services. So I want to talk a little bit about the project drivers, and I'm getting ahead of myself here with a little delay, so I apologize for that. The drivers for this project, okay? The buildings, the both of buildings are between 50 and 70 years old approximately. They've been a good investment for the town. They've served the community very well over the past few years, but they're really not serving the needs of a modernized facilities, both public works and fire. And it's time to really move forward and think about the future and what the town needs for the next 50 years, 50 to 70 years. When we think about these facilities and the age of the facilities, one of the best things to look at is the population changes over the years. When these facilities were originally constructed, the population was around 2,500, 3,000 people. Since that time, going to today, the population is more than, has increased sixfold to ninefold, pretty substantial when you think about it. With the population change comes the dwelling changes, comes the road miles, comes the infrastructure that keeps this town running. With that also, you also have increased staff, increased vehicles, and the vehicles have changed over the years as well. The vehicles now are inherently more complex and bigger. An example of that, you can see some of the fires, some of the fire equipment in front of the Station 1. You can see on these photos the height of these vehicles compared to the overhead doors. Some of these vehicles just can't fit in some of these spaces. Similarly, with the public works facility, here's a photo of the public works garage. You can see how the vehicles are kind of crammed in there. When you take a closer look, this is the rear of the vehicles backed up against the spaces. You can see there might be an inch of clearance there. On the front side of the building, you can see right up against, the front side of the vehicles, you can see you're right up against the doors, maybe 18 inches of clearance. This is, you know, this is subject the vehicles to damage, subjects the building to damage. It's very time-consuming moving these vehicles in and out and trying to get them to accommodate, accommodate inside that space. Also, if you think about it, if there's an emergency event inside these spaces, how is somebody supposed to respond to that? How is somebody supposed to get out? One other thing is if you take a look at the center drive aisle in that photo on the right, you see there's a vehicle parked in the middle. If you zoom in on that space, you can see that vehicle is being maintained. So the vehicles can't really move in and out under the circumstance until that vehicle is fixed and back up on the road. Again, another very inefficient part of the operations. Here are some shots of the interior spaces. These are all actually the public works facilities. The photo on the, on the, on the left is an office space that was really built for one person. It's now accommodating two, maybe three. I think it's two. The middle, the middle photo is the break area and training room. That needs to accommodate 19 to 29 people approximately. Very crowded. I think we've been in there with like seven or eight, and it's been crowded. So I can't even imagine what it's like when it's fully staffed. The photo on the right is access to the mezzanine. We're standing on the mezzanine looking down. Mezzanine is a, is a great space. We advocate for it. It's, it's very cost-effective. It's great storage that's always needed. But when you look at this, you see the railing there, really not code compliant and really is a hazard for, for the staff members who sometimes are walking up those stairs or down those stairs carrying heavy objects. And at the bottom of the stairs, you really don't have the landing clearances before you hit the, the transfer switch for the generator. And when we're talking about codes and standards, one thing to keep in mind is Station, Station 1 is in a flood zone. This is a FEMA map that you see here on the, on the top right, and on the bottom is a photo from 2018 to the rear of the facility. It's really difficult to have a, a first responder in, in such a situation that could compromise their response times. And this is a photo with water inside of the DPW facility. Now, while it's not in a flood zone, the building envelope is, is leaks and you get water inside, and that results in a more corrosive environment, and it also results in a potential slip hazard. So I could spend a whole presentation talking about the deficiencies in these facilities, but the committee thought it was really important to just move beyond and talk about the future. So what does a new improved facilities give the town? Well, number one, you're going to have a safe environment for your workers. Oh, these aren't adding up. I'm sorry. You're also going to have protection of the investment that the town has in their multimillion-dollar And you're going to have, I'm going to skip ahead here, so get those lines off of there. So we're also going to be able to have better response times and improve overall water quality with proper stormwater management system. We all know how valuable water quality is on the Cape. And this will also help eliminate band-aiding the, the current substandard facilities. In other words, putting good money on top of bad. And it also reduces the chances of replacing your facilities before it becomes a mandated emergency. We have worked with other communities that have been in that situation, and it's not a good situation. So let's talk about the work completed to date. Here's an overview graphic about the feasibility study process and the process that we followed. The first thing we want to do is we want to look at the existing conditions. What are some of the deficiencies and how does, how do those deficiencies compromise the operations? What are the program needs? To do that, we interview the staff, we observe the operations, and we compare that to some modern-day standards. And then we develop a concept or a program that defines our spaces. We actually go through and we define each individual room and add up those spaces. And then from there, we develop the concepts. So when we look at this and we look at the spaces, two of the biggest drivers are the staffing and the vehicles and equipment. When we look at the staffing, we don't just think about the number of employees, we think about what are the shifts? How many full-time employees? How many part-time employees? Are there any vacancies? Are there any transfers that might come in? Or are there any potential future needs that we should anticipate? Similarly, when we look at the vehicles and equipment, we want to take into account the size of that, size of that equipment. Are they gas? Are they diesel? Are they trailered? Are they stored on a trailer? So we want to take all that into consideration, as well as any other special needs that these vehicles and equipment might have. Once we look at all that information and we, and we pull it all together, we develop the program. And in this case, what you see on the screen is the program that we developed. And this is after a couple iterations of walking back through the users and as well as the committee group. We got the, the space needs down to approximately 53,000 square, 53,000 square feet. Once we have that program, we start taking a look at the site. In this case, we're looking at the public works site. And we want to start off looking at what are some of the, the site challenges? In this case, anybody that's familiar with the site knows that outside of the developed area, there's a steep embankment to the north of that development. Beyond that is still sloped grade, not as steep as the embankment, but it all slopes north to the prop, to the north property line. And straddling the north property line is a wetland area. In addition, there are three access points on the site. Two are for the visitor's center, and one is a shared access between the public works operation and the transfer station. So taking all this information to, into account, we started working through some concepts with the user group. And some of the items that we talked about as we walked through was the benefits, the pros and cons, if you will, of repurposing the existing building. We also talked about the benefits of sharing space and sharing systems. We talked about how best to deal with the grade changes. The grade changes, if we were to leave them alone, really separates your operations and you can't get the shared spaces. And we talked about how best to deal with the access points. That's a critical item when you're thinking about the heavy equipment that's going to be coming in and out of this space, as well as the, the public access to the transfer station and the public safety on Route 130. Ultimately, one option rose to the top, and there's two variations of it. The image to the bottom repurposes a small portion of the existing building for vehicle storage. The benefit, benefit to this is you reuse an existing building. The detriment to this project is you're, you've got a pinch point that will remain to the south end of the site. You also have to bring that building up to code, which can be expensive, and you're held to that grade. On the north, it's all new. We have some flexibility with what we can do with the grading. And with, with that, we think there might be some savings in there with the cuts and fills and balancing the cuts and fills and reducing the size of any retaining walls that might be necessary. So the other benefits with this that the committee liked was the shared space and systems. You can see it's all one building. It's not separate. This also allows emergency access to Charles Street for the fire, and this will give quicker response times to that area. This layout has counterclockwise traffic patterns, and that's recommended for safety purposes. It gives the driver the better vantage point, particularly when towing heavy equipment and vehicles.
Before you go on, on that bottom drawing, that, the white box.
Yep.
What is that?
The white box is the fuel island. Yep. On the north end of the development, correct?
Yeah, it's not in the top one. That's what I'm just wondering.
Oh, that's, that's the existing building that's going to be repurposed.
Okay.
So the other advantage here is the administrative area is, is street-facing, and that gives the town some flexibility in terms of how they want to make this building look. The administrative area is, you know, you're going to have some storefronts, you're going to have windows. It's your lowest volume area. To the rear of the site will be a higher volume area in more of an industrial setting with the overhead doors. So the next steps. Well, we want to engage professional services for an owner, owner's project manager. This owner project, owner's project manager is also going to be shared with the Town Hall project and the Sandwich Hollows project. Once the town has the owner's project manager selected, then they could put out an RFQ for the designer, the A&E firm. The schedule, the, the desired schedule is to put out the OPM for the, the RFQ for the OPM this, this month in November, and then for the designer in early winter and have the work completed. Sorry about that. And have the, the work completed in the spring and summer of 2024, and then ask for design funds in, in fiscal year 2025. And that's it. Is there any questions?
So the projected square footage of the building that you're going to look, the build would be 53, roughly 54,000 square feet combined total?
Correct. And what we, what we have done through this process is we are able to compare to what other communities have done. We keep a database of the facilities that, that have been done in the state, comparing vehicles, staffing, and divisions of operations for public works facilities. And we're able to compare that to what's being proposed for the public works operation here, and it was right in line with other standards within the state. And with the fire, it's very similar to what their needs were as well.
So JJ, as far as the fire part of this, what, what are you building in this project? How many bays and all that?
So we'd be looking at either three or four bays. If you do four bays, two vehicles each, that gets you the eight going across, and that'll get all of our apparatus inside.
So we're not looking at new apparatus or?
Nope. The only thing with this is we get the ladder truck moved into this new station because where it sits at Station 3 now with the ISO rating, insurance, we only get half credit because our high-rise or high-priority buildings reside downtown and they're responding from Forestale. So that'll give us an upgrade in our ISO rating if we can move that truck to this new station.
From the point of view of the public, is it similar to what's out on Cotuit Road?
I would like it to be pretty much the same thing. I think the design and occupancy that we have out there, and we've been in there four years now, is perfect. And do not reinvent the wheel. Just tweak a few things, but it's the same square footage, pretty much 10,000. And, you know, talking with, with everybody, we're satisfied with that out there. I would like to replicate it.
What would be the shared services?
So the shared services would be in part with, with the, or the shared spaces, if you will, will be in, in part with the, the employee space areas, as well as the vehicle maintenance areas as, as well. And the shared services would be, if you think about it now, instead of having two buildings with HVAC, electrical, plumbing, now you have, have one system, and that's really going to also benefit with the vehicle maintenance area, which has, you know, fluid storage, pot storage, et cetera.
JJ, can you just explain for everybody that, you know, part of the driving force of this is the current location of the building where you're at and some of the challenges that you're having with that? And then, you know, also, you know, you mentioned the, the insurance and how that actually hits everybody's homeowner policy and what the benefits to doing this are, you know, from a individual like taxpayer standpoint as well?
Yep. So the building location, obviously in a floodplain. In my career, prior to 2017, flooding would come into the parking lot, but not bad. And then 2018, we had four successive March storms where it flooded every single time. And I remember driving away, leaving the junior guy sitting at the station, telling him, "We'll come back for you. Don't worry." His water encircled the entire building more than once. So every successive storm that we have, the water is getting closer and closer. So that's part one. Part two, it was built in the 50s. The height of vehicles has changed significantly, so it's an inch or two clearance when we put our vehicles in. And subsequently, if we have an incident in Bourne or another department's coming to cover our station, they can't put it in the building. If it's January, they have to leave the engine outside running so the pump doesn't freeze. It could be for hours. So in terms of height, it's an issue. Width is an issue also now with the mirrors, even of the ambulances, we have to push them in as we back. We have to push them in as we back it in. So just the overall design of the building itself in the fifties, the apparatus will not fit in there also. And then it's just, it was built in the fifties, right? The paneling upstairs, God knows how long that's been there, the carpeting. You know, we we have made some minor modifications for male female quarters, male female bathrooms that we had to do. But those are Band-Aid measures right now. So there's a lot to it. We don't take it lightly. We, you know, we we like the building, but it is definitely past its useful life now. And and we are wholeheartedly supportive of going in and and sharing this new space with Paul. We think it makes sense.
And could you just touch on the insurance part of it too, so people don't understand what that?
Yeah, so the insurance service organization rates, they give a rating to the fire departments or your homeowner's insurance. You can call them and and that's what they charge you for fire protection. It's based on station location, it's based on staffing, it's based on apparatus. There's a whole bunch of factors. It impacts the resident or residential policies minimal, believe it or not. It's the commercial policies that see significant savings. So when you look at the new Wing School housing area, when you look at Highview Hilltop Condos, when you look at the power plant, when you look at these big priority areas, they're going to see the commercial base will see significant savings. The average homeowner, it could be five percent. But again, it is a savings and we keep improving our rating. The lower the rating, the better. So we're at a two, three now, started in my career at a six. To get to one, probably not, won't see it in my career, but we're pretty close with the with the ten-person staffing, the age and the newness of the apparatus and the station location placement.
Great.
JJ, I wanted to mention that from a programming standpoint for the community, when we, I was on the board and Mrs. James was on the board the last time we when we advanced our public safety buildings. Then we knew that we would be here not very long. We knew that we couldn't leave Station One and but our but we were motivated at the time for improving the response time on the south side of town and Andy Sandwich. So we were we were motivated by that. But I want everybody to realize at home that this wasn't something that just came to us when when we were just taking on Public Works, that we always knew we were going to be back to this situation. And it's a good because it because at the time, we felt badly about not advancing all three stations at one time, but we really couldn't afford it. But it gets that station to Exit Two, which is really critical for our response to the entire town.
Correct.
It's it's really amazing to get it there as compared with where it is now even. So and then as far as the Public Works building is concerned, I mean, we it's fifty three plus years old. It served the town well. We really have a have an obligation to advance that for our staff. And then as far as the site's concerned, this is typical of a site that binds you if you want to stay with what's there. And we it's a small enough and constrained enough site where we need that kind of flexibility to build new and put things where it's most advantageous. Because the minute you move, you bind yourself to what's already there, you end up with defects in the overall scheme. So that's why we want to advance to a essentially new facility. And I think we kind of came to that with the fuel depot as well because it's thirty, it's a thirty-year, we're twenty years into a thirty-year warranty. So to be bound by its location is another thing that would hold us back. So this is a really good project and it's 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 a plan. It's something that Bud's knew about, Heather's known about, the board's known about. We're really just advancing something that is part of our overall plan.
I think you're also, public has to realize that's a metal building that was put up in the early seventies. I don't think the lifespan was this long. If you've been up there, it's rusted, it's got all types of concerns that way. The biggest concern I had when I toured it was I would hope that these drawings are showing an increase in your parking space inside, right? Because those vehicles are packed in there so tight now that you're right. If there was ever an issue with a burning truck or an issue with a fire in there, you'd lose the whole the whole, all the equipment and everything else, there's just no way to get out of there.
That's why when the fire calls.
That's right.
Run the hose from next door.
I got you, Paul, don't worry.
But I guess my point is, I know how bad it is as far as space-wise that you have now. I'm wondering how much bigger you have you, these drawings are going to be needed to actually accomplish what you want to put in there safely. So is that all figured into the fifty-something thousand square feet?
Yes, yeah, we we actually went through when we 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 got all his vehicles, all the public works vehicles, and we accounted for them within their space. The preferred vehicle storage garage was a drive-through bay where one entrance, one exit. Vehicles all park on either side on angled parking. Plows get stored inside right in front of the vehicles, really a very efficient setup.
My my point of all this, of course, is that if we can get this through, that you're not going to see anything again. So you better do it right as far as what your needs are going to be. Because I I don't know if you want public people in your building, but if anybody really gets interested, you ought to go up and take a walk through and see what they are living with. And and JJ, for you, what what's your sleep, what are the sleeping numbers in this, would you have in this station?
Probably four bedrooms times two, right? So two beds per room, so sleeping eight, which is what we have currently at Cottouatt Road.
Okay. Heather?
Yeah, just a couple of comments just in response to Sloughman Miller's question. The next phase of the project is to advance the feasibility study to a first level of design, to a feasibility level of design. What we've done already was sort of preliminary to a more formal process. So this will allow us to take another look at the programming, take another look at the space needs of both departments to make sure that we, you know, measure twice and cut once. And then we'll come back and it may not look exactly the same as what we're presenting this evening, but we'll have a much deeper look with the site planning, with the earth cutting, with, you know, better ideas of, you know, what, how much space the corridor takes up in a building and getting a really good handle on what the space needs are. And the other thing I just wanted to note for the public as well, we're talking about fifty five thousand or fifty three thousand total square feet, but of that, eight thousand six hundred and forty-four square feet currently is finished space. The remainder of that, the lion's share of the space is unfinished space. So that really is, I think it's an important message that folks know that this is not a finished space of fifty three thousand square feet. It's an eight thousand square foot, you know, shared administrative building with a lot of space that's really used for storage of the fleet and mechanical work.
And Paul, just can you, just for everybody, why do you park your vehicles inside? You know, like, why do we need, you know, it's apparent why, you know, fire trucks would have to be inside with the apparatus that's in them. But just as importantly, why does, you know, why do DPW vehicles, you know, need to go inside as well?
Yeah, really a number of reasons. One of the most important ones, we want to really want to protect our our capital investments. We've had some lean years, but over the past, I mean, five or six years, we've been able to get some some new vehicles, new equipment. And unfortunately, we have to store some of that outside. So the longevity is lost there if they're outside. If we have a facility that can store them inside, it'll extend the life of those vehicles. It's also difficult for us to to mobilize, especially during storms. We have our plows are outside, some trucks are inside, some trucks are outside. So we have to attach our plows sometimes right before the storms in the cold weather, and it's difficult. It's inefficient as well. And the the inside garage right now is sort of like a jigsaw puzzle, and it's very inefficient. Takes a long time for us to mobilize to to act on any emergency.
And Paul, just for everybody at home as well, like, and I'll ask this to JJ too, because his number is more scary. But the reason that we store these inside is, what's the average cost of one of those trucks that you have in the garage now?
So the the large dump trucks we've had, and we have operating budget line on them that has been covering those at a hundred fifty thousand dollars. But they've been steadily going up over the last five years. They're at two fifty right right now for one of those large dump trucks.
Right. JJ, you're really scary.
Do I have to answer that? Average ambulance has gone up to close to four hundred thousand dollars, diesel ambulance, and most engines are around eight hundred. Our latest ambulance, we got regular gas for two sixty-five, and we got a stock engine for six hundred. We just got in just in time. And we our capital needs for apparatus, we should be good for at least ten years after this this latest push. But you're you're talking significant, the cost has gone up thirty percent since COVID on this apparatus.
So just for the folks at home, yeah, I think you have like twenty trucks roughly, right, Paul? You have about twenty trucks, is that correct, give or take?
I think you had the numbers in the presentation. I think it's more than that.
It's more than that. Was it thirty-three?
Twenty-three large trucks.
Yeah, twenty-three large, I'm sorry, twenty-three large trucks, whatever, that are typically inside.
Thirty pieces of equipment.
Right. I mean, you know, for the the folks at home, I mean, you're talking about a ten to twelve million dollar investment, a DPW equipment that's sitting outside, and JJ's got about seven to eight million dollars worth of apparatus that's needs to be housed. So we're not talking about, you know, pickup trucks that everybody has in their driveway. These are, you know, heavy, complex, you know, pieces of equipment that really, you know, degrade in sunlight, you know, inclement weather. They get damaged, you know, things like that when they sit outside, like, obviously. So and this is a need, you know, for safety reasons, as well as, you know, moving the firehouse out of the high-tide zone, you know?
And they're heavily electronic.
Right.
And that, we're really dependent on that now. And so that's why that weatherization is really more important than ever.
Correct.
Paul, as far as the, are you set for what you need for vehicles right now? Are you still on the lease program for the big trucks?
No, not anymore, but we we were trading those in each year until the price went up. And then we've been asking for additional money and capital to cover that within the operating budget as well. But this, every year, we're we're asking for additional vehicles because the wear and tear is just, it it's difficult on the vehicle, especially when you're plowing. But, you know, we've been fortunate to to have some capital items in the last two or three years that we really needed. So I'd say we're maybe two or three vehicles short at this point.
I guess that's probably a softball. Could you both explain the importance of Charles Street, both from an emergency response, but also from a wastewater perspective?
Want me to go first?
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, Charles Street. So as a townie, I used to take that, I didn't drive, but my parents, we used to cut to go to the dump in the seventies and eighties. And it's a good cut through. So when this project came to light, I revisited my youth and and said, what a rapid response. If we cut the road back in with gates on either side, so people with ways are not going to travel through there, it would cut off three to four minutes to the Galloping Hills neighborhood, Charles Street, that area. It allows an evacuation route for people up in that neighborhood if they had to evacuate. Because I remember in the early eighties, I had to evacuate that way for a gas leak. So looking at that, we actually plotted out initially response times with the cut-in with Charles Street. It's significant. Again, three to four minutes is, I mean, you can imagine with traffic getting down Water Street, if you were able to cut through behind the station, Charles Street, you're up on Chestnut Chipman, that whole Christopher Hollow area within a minute. So that, to me, is a very important aspect of this to, you know, again, reduce the response time.
I think from a wastewater standpoint, ideally, you want to minimize disruption of tearing up the roads. So there's nothing out there right now, so it'd be minimal disruption. And, you know, it services a large area. And I think ideally, when we have an opportunity like that, we want to take advantage of a section of road where we can install sewer.
How important is the geography of that piece of property? Is there much flexibility? I mean, that hole is pretty deep.
It is.
It's pretty deep.
It's a tough site.
Yeah, so the constraints of the piece of property itself may determine. I mean, it looks good here that it fits in, but I don't know what that it looks like when you're and how much work that's going to need to get that way.
Yeah, I think we want, once we get more into the investigation of the soils and the earthwork out there. And Patrick and Charles have been great. They're on a committee providing good guidance. And I think Patrick suggested maybe we could do a tiered type of configuration if we have to. You know, if it's too steep and the retaining wall's too tall, then we might be able to do a tiered level facility on the outside of that.
Because that can be a major cost.
Yeah, right, right. We also have.
We don't want to lose a fire truck down the hole, though.
No. No, and you'd have to, when we get to that point, we're just going to have to look at what.
Yeah.
You don't want to end up stuck on a bad site to save an inexpensive salt shed. On the other hand, we have two salt sheds that we depend on.
Yeah.
And throwing those away, you know, that's what would you'd throw away if you had to leave the site, essentially.
How much land behind the salt sheds do we actually have? Is there much? Ownership or town property?
Yeah, we own, we own, we own that piece going down.
All the way to the neighborhood?
All the way to the neighborhood. Not as deep into, your your slide's actually pretty good on that.
Yeah. You can see, oh, I I don't show, oh.
I think I'm one of the ones where.
Yeah, it's the one before this.
Yeah, it's the one before that.
Go back one more?
There it is.
Yeah, there you go.
So all that, everything that's in the forest, like, is is town?
Correct.
And how close can you build to that water hole? That's the hole anyway, right?
Yeah, you'd never get.
Never get down there.
Couldn't. We'd rather put the sand on the beach. It'd take that much to fill that hole.
Wouldn't be allowed to do it anyway.
I mean, the bottom three yellow arrows are probably the only level area out there. And then everything else is just massive slopes. And heavily forested.
I think another thing we talked about is, especially with the fire EMS bays, there would need to be like an activated signal out there, you know, to stop traffic so they can exit.
Yeah, and we've got some work to do with the, as this faces Route one thirty and how we're going to address, how we're going to address that.
That's true, fire department.
You got a transfer station, fire department, a DPW.
Buildings taken out.
Yeah, and a chamber of commerce, all.
There's also future.
You can come in, you can get into an ambulance, you can get, pick up some cold patch, you come out the front side, go to the, it's a lot.
Do you see any challenges with the timeline that's laid forward? Like more, I guess this question is more for JJ with the flooding, you know, as far as do we have a contingency plan? If we, you know, something really happened, like, what what does that look like?
So and we test it every May. So the Water District Building, the newer barn that's behind the Water District on Tupper, we evacuate there and run calls for a half a day every time in May, and we get the apparatus there. It's about eleven feet above sea level. We've checked the FEMA maps. I think we're okay. It's got a generator. The Water District has been great. If something were to happen tomorrow, we can turnkey and be set up and ready to go, operating out of the Water District site with some tweaks, but we still have a presence in the downtown district. So once they built that, we, that was one of the things.
Communications, would you, do you have the ability to?
Yep. So all the, so everything now is cloud-based, all of our tablets in the truck. We can dispatch from my car if we had to, like, we have a lot of flexibility. The big thing is space to put trucks inside and for crews to have have a pseudo-living space. And that Water District location, we can, we can do that. So I'm very comfortable if something were to happen, we could turnkey it in hours and be ready to go. It's not the long-term solution, but, you know, when we saw that flooding in eighteen, we figured Coke Plant was our original play. But again, that's south of one thirty. That really gets us out of the downtown district. When the Water District built that that barn in the back, we immediately asked, hey, if something happens, can we put our trucks? We fit everything in there, we take pictures, we do the drill every year, so I'm very comfortable.
I know you didn't mention it, but I think before you, long before eighteen, there was some serious water down there in a couple storms. Maybe a photo.
serious water, uh, down there in a couple storms, uh, maybe a foot or so deep that went right straight through. The police station's up about six or eight feet, so it didn't flood, didn't flood, but you guys did.
Yep. And I think the one quick thing I'll mention on the location, and Patrick alluded to this, the proximity to Route 6 is cannot be underestimated in terms of response time, right? So we are responsible for Phillips Road and Scussa Beach. So being so close to Exit 2, being able to go east, west, north, south in that area is important. Also, I tell people, the second and third calls that we get, 33% of the time, we're out with two ambulances already, your neighborhood fire station may not be the one that's gonna show up. So when you think of a triangle in a circle, we're starting to pinch this into a triangle with the station locations, which will get us good response time to everybody or secondary response time. So think if you're on Great Hill Road right now and the East Sandwich Station is out, the secondary response would come from the station. You get on at Exit 2, you go two exits, you're off the highway, you're there. So that's another attractive feature of this location from a response perspective that we look at.
Frank Panofsky was all over that.
And I think, just so the board's aware, I think one of Mike's first slides and bullets, we were looking for the board's permission to issue an RFP for project management services. Because of the known size of this project, we need to have a project manager on board following the state requirements. And similarly, the work that's gonna be needed on the front of this building and some of the roof areas, plus what we're dealing with on the front of Sandwich Hollows, both of those projects are gonna be, um, structural ones we're gonna have to do, so we thought, why not kill three birds with one stone, get one project manager to help us with all three?
Uh, all this new construction, sounds great. Um, in your estimation, uh, what's the life expectancy of it?
To, that is, um, it's a variable question, it's, it's, it depends on how the facility is designed and and budgeted. Uh, we try to design our facilities to last, um, more than 50 years. Uh, we do go pre-engineered metal building, uh, such as this one, um, but there's certain things that we can do to, that are gonna help, uh, protect the longevity of such a building. Um, and pre-engineered metal buildings of today are substantially different than what they were 50 years ago.
Okay, yes, thank you. We just don't want the folks at home to, uh, to think that we're gonna be back in 10 to 20 years and, uh, it has a life expectancy that'll benefit the town for decades to come.
Absolutely.
I love the response times, chief, as well.
Yeah, for sure. So, but if I get this right, we appropriated 300,000 back. Now you, now we are gonna have to make a decision about for town meeting purposes or?
To get the OPM on board, we don't need any more money. Um, we have money to continue with, continue, keep continuing with the better level feasibility study, um, and probably get us to, uh, a good enough conceptual design so we'd have a number to go to town meeting with. I think that's one of the things we've wrestled with in a lot of projects, like, you don't want to ask for the money for full architectural plans, is the question, do you want to ask for money for architectural plans before you ask for construction or some, another line of thinking is why waste all that money if you're not gonna build it? And so most of the time, we've gone with really good conceptual plans with a total amount that we then use for full architect, construction, design, bidding, you know, everything, construction.
So again, for, make it clear to the public, what you're asking for is something we've already.
Yeah, we're not asking for any money tonight. We probably won't need to ask the public for money, um, either a year from now or a year and a little bit from now, like maybe.
Is there, good.
Well, just to be clear, when we issue the RFP for the OPM and designer services, it will be for the full project, but we will only award to preliminary design.
Oh, okay.
So because you've got to have the OPM on board for the entirety of the project, so it will be for full design and construction services, but we would only award for the the phase of services we have funded, which is preliminary design.
And at the end of that is when we would probably look for the town meeting access and all that.
You you could decide you need more information and want to do a little bit more, you know, at a preliminary level, um, but more than likely you'll have enough information to advise you as to whether you're moving forward or not.
The only thing that I just want to ask is, are we spending money that would not eventually go towards the project at its conceptual thing? In looking at the, you know, the questions and the head shaking, I think that we all agree that this is a facility that's needed, you know, I would say dire, you know, we really need to upgrade, um, both facilities. But is there a way that we can do a cost-saving step as if we conceptually agree to start moving forward on the eventual plan? Or do we need to do these other steps first? You mean, are we gonna spend half a million dollars or 300,000 dollars on, you know, conceptual designs that we could be applying to actual design work?
This is a customary part of the design process. We're just taking our first small bite of that now.
Right.
But one of the things to Bud's point is, we've done a really good job historically of not advancing a project by design and then having town meeting turn that down and stranding that investment. Instead, we tend to look at what's it gonna be conceptually for design and construction and project supervision? And this is what a project costs and we go to town meeting with that. So I I'm assuming that's what we'll do now.
So what you need from us tonight is?
I guess just know that our plan is to issue the RFP for the OPM, this is the main project, but also for the front of this building and for the front of the golf course where we're having some, um, you know, loose, spongy material yet again, uh, similar to what we addressed on the back of that building, uh, several years ago.
So tonight, the purpose of tonight would be to, just the authorization to.
Yes.
Request.
OPM services, I'm saying.
Do you need a vote on it or you just need us to consensus?
Consensus is fine, you will vote on the contract.
Yeah. Very good. Is anybody opposed to it?
Not opposed at all.
Perfect.
Thank you, Mike, thank you, Paul, thank you.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to old business, fiscal year '25 and beyond, the initial board feedback.
Um, I think I had mentioned in my report, so I'm going before the finance committee with, um, the town team, uh, next Tuesday night. Um, any, like, either things you don't want me to say that I said to you, I'm gonna say it briefer, that's one thing I've been instructed that I would be better if I did, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to make it briefer. Um, and again, we've been working on sort of better presentation material about graphs and things, there's a few of those we might show, if those are ready in time, um, I'll share those with you beforehand.
I want to, we talked the other day.
Yeah.
Uh, one of my, one of my issues was whether the funding will come through from the cannabis for that purpose, but the second thing I saw was, uh, you had down two SROs, but but one's already.
Yes, so.
Budgeted, so are we going to three?
No, no, we would only, I know, that part's confusing. We would only have two SROs, which the cannabis owner would be willing to sign a donation with, agreement with us with to pay for, based on what we've heard so far, but we don't have anything in writing yet. Um, but that money that we're already paying for one SRO would get freed up and then the thing below it, where the three people to add one person on the four to midnight shift, so we'd only have to fund two new, not three, because we already have that funding.
That's what my point was, when you add, when you add someone to offline, then you've got to, you're gonna be short online.
Right.
Whoever you pull offline is gonna reduce your, your daily online people.
Right.
You know? But that may come up as a question.
Yeah, we, it's, a couple of them are a little bit more confusing because it's, for lack of a better word, the ripple effects that we're showing on that list, not, you know, because we have some funding, we need a little bit more to fully implement.
And the other issue is, is you're committing, like, the 10-year funds from the, uh, opiate thing.
Yeah.
Locking them in. So there won't be any options to use it for something else.
That's only a share of the funding.
Right, yeah.
So it's a large share, but a share.
Correct. Anybody have any? Good. See what finance does. Yeah, good. Uh, other matters not reasonably anticipated?
I'm sorry, there was one old one and poor Charlie's, we we put that draft motion and it was for this next thing, um, because you had voted in, and I have the old agenda packet if anyone needs it, but we voted to, um, I guess, um, accept the concept of those easements for the 130 Quaker Meeting House Road intersection at your September 14th meeting. So that tonight is to actually accept the gift of the easements. And so Vicky Marsh has been working with DPW and engineering and it would really be helpful if we just keep the ball rolling so they can get ready to advertise and stuff, so.
I only had one question, Paul. The Greenville Drive section that you want the easement on, what, I didn't understand what, that's, that's north of intersection.
The lane goes all the way back to there.
Is that a lane? Is that what you're taking that for?
So the, the takings, yeah, basically for a sidewalk.
Oh, okay.
But both of the takings.
I didn't, I.
Not a taking, but the easement, yeah.
Print is so small that I.
Yeah, it's not much, but.
Can't quite.
On private property.
So, so you can get a read on it?
Now I can get through the whole.
I'm dying to do this.
Uh, thank you, Paul, that was very helpful. Um, motion to accept the grant of easements for 8 Quaker Meeting House Road and 86 Greenville Drive in Forestale, Mass. to the favor of Verizon, New England, Inc.
Second. Motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Pass. One question before you go, have we got all the easements we needed now, or is it still that one hanging out?
We have, on one side of the road, we have all the easements we need.
Yeah, so potentially we might phase this, two phases, uh, the first phase, pretty much take care of the majority of what we want to do. Um, there is one additional easement, PA Lanners, that if we go to a phase two, we would need their consent.
What, what is the hangup with them? You've been working on, this, this has been years, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we've had some negotiations, discussions about the drainage. We have a drainage facility that, and an easement conveys water to their site and they, they want us to eliminate all the stormwater and it's nearly impossible to do that. We can't possibly contain all the stormwater out of the sites.
That's a big amount of water there.
Yeah, so we're hopeful that, you know, we'll continue to work with them. We don't necessarily need to go to phase two, um, but we're gonna see how the system works. We've got a good drainage system in place and design should work, so we're not too concerned about it, but if we have to go to phase two, we'll continue to work with PA Lanners.
We don't have an easement now with them for the water going off?
We, we do, it's a very, very old easement, um, and water's been conveyed there for many, many years before we had an easement and before any of us were here. Um, it'll continue to go a low area no matter, no matter what.
So if we go through to a two-stage project, the road would be resurfaced anyway, right?
Yes, so.
It would be half the road down and the other half.
Right. It's part of a mass DOT program to pave municipal numbered, uh, state numbered roads that are municipally owned and they've done the first section. And we're hopeful that we can get our base work done for the intersection so they can come in and pave it. Um, they plan to do that next spring, summer, starting in Mashpee and working their way up. So hopefully we get our, our portion done and they can come in and just take care of the rest.
Nice. I've had a number of Forestale people over the last two years very concerned about the deterioration of that, asking, when is it gonna be fixed? So I'd hate to see it half-fixed.
Yeah, as are we. We kind of keep putting off, knowing that we're gonna do something and we're chasing grants and getting grants where we got delayed, um, as part of the, the design and easement process.
If I'm not mistaken, part of the reason that that floods there is because that, those catch basins get filled with the runoff from the trucks leaving the pit, correct? I don't know about that.
Oh, they leave a lot of debris.
Yeah.
Debris ends up in there and we clean it more than they do.
But the backs, those drain holes.
We have to clean it.
We, we have an agreement with them, they're supposed to sweep that periodically. Um, they don't do it as much as we'd like, but, uh, we, we make sure we contact them if it's an issue and it does get clogged once in a while and, uh, you know, hopefully the new system will take care of a lot of that.
Anybody else?
Well done, we voted, right?
Yeah, we're good.
Yeah.
Good. Good?
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Thanks. You're the lone survivor this evening.
Yeah.
Uh, other matters not anticipated in our old business? Any? Okay, we'll move on to the remaining new business, the Henry T. Wing School disposition, request exercise the first option, extension.
Very quickly, I would say this is good news and we do require an extension, it's the first one that they've officially requested under this phase. They have, um, I'd say 90% of their funding in place, they're looking for, uh, to cover a, what is right now a million-dollar shortfall on a project is, that is between 50 and 60 million dollars. So it's, their project is in good shape, the fact that this developer is seeking an extension is a positive sign, they are intending to move forward and our hope is that that will be, um, closing on that property in the first half of 2024.
Perfect. And how long is the extension, just roughly?
No, I don't even know.
It's a one-year extension.
It's a one-year extension, right?
It's, it's October to October.
Right, okay.
So that would assume that they're, they're, I mean, they probably could ask for another extension, but I guess they're assuming they'll be.
We have, we, we have the option to give them one more extension within our agreement. Um, we're hoping that will not be necessary.
Yeah, it seems like they'll be, want to, they'll be kicking off before they ask for another extension.
Mm-hmm.
Do you need a vote on that?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Okay, um. Where's his name, though?
Oh. You need a name? You don't need a name, do you?
I think you can authorize an, uh, extension with Stratford Capital Group for the redevelopment of the Wing School.
Thank you. Move to agree to an extension to exercise the first option for an extension from Stratford.
On the Wing School.
As related to the disposition of the Wing School.
Second. Motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Okay, we'll move on to the recommended board and committee appointments, we have two, uh, you're good.
If I can just quickly clarify, for the COA, Bob O'Neil backed out, so it's Mary Ellen Anderson, and then for the Commission on Disabilities, it's Alexandra Bowdre.
Okay, so the council's still looking for somebody?
Um, I'm not sure, I'd have to check with Susan. Just for the background, Bob is a part-time custodian up there and, uh, someone just left and he's willing to work more hours, so we didn't think it was right to have a full-time employee also be on a board there, so.
He's a nuclear engineer.
He is, he's awesome. He's been doing awesome. Yeah.
Move to approve a committee appointments, the council on aging, Mary Ellen Anderson, the Sandwich Commission on Disability, Alexandra Bowdre. Alexandra Bowdre.
Second. Have a motion and a second, any discussion, seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Under new business, anybody have other matters not reasonably anticipated by the chairman? Seeing none. I can actually say it by name, Sue, do you have anything to say in the public comment? Everybody left this early this evening. Um, closing remarks, um, I'll do one first, the, um, the women's, uh, varsity field hockey at Sandwich have made it to the Elite Eight, it is the last home game of the season, um, it's gonna be tomorrow at 1:00 PM against Foxborough. Um, it's gonna be tomorrow at 1:00 PM against Foxborough. And they need as many people to come because allegedly, the rumor has it, that Foxborough is bringing fan buses to the game. So if you're around tomorrow at 1:00 PM, it would be much appreciated at the high school.
Well, that's a good one. Thank you.
Elsie's Angels.
That.
One, uh, comment from the School Safety Committee that met this morning. Uh, the introduction of new school resource officer, Mark Peterson. Welcome, Officer Peterson. Program-- And it's, uh, the-- The Safety Committee has been progressing very well over the last year. I think we'll be seeing some more exercises coming up soon. Very productive. And then, "We must continue to maintain the overall threat to world peace in our thoughts and prayers. The wars in Eastern Europe and the Middle East are reflections of our challenging times."
Bud, I'm just-- Out of interest, some people have asked me, I guess because I used to be chief, I don't know.